So now being 5:45, I'll call the January 9th meeting of the Plimpton Border Selectment Order. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, this meeting will be conducted via remote means. Members of the public who wish to access the meeting may join the Zoom meeting via your computer, audio, or both. The information was included on our agenda as well as the pass codes if you were choosing to dial into the meeting. No in-person attendance and members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event we're unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the town's website, town.plimpton MA.us, an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and all parties with a right and a requirement to attend this meeting can also be found on the Town of Plimpton website. So we'll jump right into things. We've got our Highway Superintendent Rob Ferlot with us here today, and you are on board for a departmental update. So you want to take it away, Rob?
Sure. I guess I'll start off with storms, winter storms coming in. We get all our salt, sand in, our ice ban thing's full, all of our equipment is up and running. We are awaiting the first real snowstorm. We get a full plow roster, which is better than most of the surrounding towns. There are actually a few pretty close by named that are down a substantial amount of trucks. Thankfully, we are not one of them. I did get a few new guys this year. If anyone notices anything they don't like, please let me know, and we'll address stuff differently. But on the whole, I think it's all going to work relatively smoothly. The first one out of the gates always, you know, the first one, but it'll work out. I met with Paze a little while ago. I forget the guy's name. I tried to find the email and didn't happen, but we discussed field maintenance for, you know, the soccer fields, baseball fields, setting up a schedule again to basically on Fridays. They were questioning us about, or me, Highway Department, I don't know how to phrase it, about infield maintenance in the ballfield. I explained to them that, you know, we currently aren't equipped to do infield maintenance. Not something that we wouldn't consider, but we're not currently equipped. So I think they're still going to work on the volunteerisms of that.
What would we need to have, Rob, to make it so we could do it?
Well, that's where I was going next. I've actually been pricing out a machine that will do sidewalks, snowblowing, and from maintenance sweeping, because we don't have the ability to do either one. I would have a 95-inch field mower attachment, and then they sell attachments that go on for infield maintenance, with an attachment that goes in the front and the back, one like, you know, tears it up a little bit, and the other one spreads it back out. I have not got prices on that yet. Yeah, about $60,000. I might be able to actually purchase it through Chapter 90. I've been working towards trying to find out if I can get funding for it that way. At least then it won't necessarily cost the town money.
I'm also wondering if there's any grants that might come from other sources.
I don't know. I haven't found any grants or heard of any grant opportunities. I actually just met with another salesman today over that machine to see what other options there are and things I can do.
I missed how much? How much again, did you say?
About $60,000 for the machine, the Three Seasons cab, the summertime canopy. I'm sorry, I'm looking at the numbers. I got written down, the 48-inch snow blower, the 52-inch power broom, and a salter, sander, spreader, like fertilizer and salt that goes on the back of it. You could use to fertilize some of the town's properties, cemeteries, because it's a handy little machine to get in between everything, athletic fields, because it's still better than pushing it. You know, it gives us a lot of versatility on what we can do, and it's substantially less money than a trackless. A trackless, which is, I guess you could say, the competitors or next one up down the line. It's a substantially more machine, but it's $100,000 just for the machine. This one comes with some attachments for a little more than half that, and still do very well for the Town of Plimpton. I mean, a lot of the attachments that go on it, we don't even currently have. We have to borrow a Halifax's sidewalk broom to do our sidewalks, which is nice of them, but you know, it's still wear and tear on their equipment. There was a few years we weren't able to sweep our sidewalks because their machine was broken. And then the snow blower, in the wintertime, our snow removal for the sidewalk really isn't the best way. We run a pickup truck down the sidewalk and push it back into the road, and then push it all the way back to the other side of the road. And we get to do this with three to four people at 2:00 in the morning, where if you had the snow blower attachment, it could be one guy during the normal day route, pretty much, when he's on during the day, and that would substantially cut down on what it costs the town on snow removal, and just kind of make it a little easier for everyone.
I think during the budget process, we should talk further about that, because it seems to make sense. And if we can...
For us, it's, I hate to sound this way, but relatively inexpensive for the amount of things it can do to benefit the town. I mean, it's still a good chunk of change, but it's comparable to others. It's not as much.
You know, it's probably pie in the sky, but this is one, if we could ever get to some shared services with other towns, go and have these for another town for equipment that gets used, you know, 1% of the time. I recognize all the problems that go with that.
That would be the thing with this machine. It would be functional pretty much all year long. Wintertime, it does snow removal with the, you know, the snow blower on the front of it. Summertime, it can mow grass. Out of the walking trails, I've been approached a few times out Cato's Ridge and Two Brooks. This machine, the way it functions, you know, the articulation, the articulation, the oscillation, and the smaller flail head that they put on the front of it, you could actually get down a portion of the trails and maintain them too. And we kind of have the staffing now to do this stuff around town. It'd be nice to have some of the equipment to make it viable and not as, you know, hard, I guess you could say, for everyone. You could do a lot more in less time. Do we want to touch on the pay as you throw? Does anybody have any questions or anything about that as far as that goes, or are you...
The pays as you throw, is that what you're asking?
That's where I was headed next. I didn't know if anybody wanted to go over anything on that. Any questions, or I can, what I got, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I met with, I was at the Council on Aging meeting this morning.
Yes.
And one of the things that came up was we need to, through the Council on Aging, we need to have some sort of a reach-out program to make sure that the seniors, and I assume disabled, that we understand what some of the restraints are going to be in terms of them working within the program. So Colleen Thompson took it as an action item to get in touch with you?
Yeah.
Okay, and to start the conversation?
Yeah, I haven't heard from her yet, but yeah, no.
No, just happened.
Whatever we can do to work with it and make everyone understand. Absolutely. So, bag enforcement, I guess we'll start April 1st. Bags should be available by March 1st. We already have the $980 grant in, the $8,350 grant is reimbursed, but we have to put the money out prior. I think some of you know this. You want me to go over like the new hours for Colleen or anything, or anything in specific? The pay as you throw?
On the pay as you throw, have you picked the bags yet? The color of the bags? I mean, they got to be obnoxious, so they stand out.
Not obnoxious. I'm trying to remember what color they are, actually. They're not orange. It might be orange. I don't know. We've gone back and forth like nine different times with it, but yes, the color of the bag has been even picked out.
Well, there's going to be times you don't come out of the shed, so you got to be able to see.
Oh, yeah. No, the color sticks out. It's different than the surrounding towns. There's only like five colors you can actually pick from. We picked one, and it was like the next town over. We picked another one. It was the other side of us. So it was back and forth on colors.
The last I heard, there was a poll, and I think we came out with green rather than...
That was for the window, that was for the window stickers, for sure. The bags might have ended up green. I don't remember, but the sticker that goes on like the rear window of the car, that one's definitely green and white.
Well, if the bags has to look like bags you can buy in any store, then that's ridiculous.
Yeah, no, no. I have the flyer thing.
No, no, I'm fine, as long as you're sure.
With me. I can send it to you. I don't have the email. Sorry, I was just digging through to see if I printed it off. I don't have it right now, but I can forward it to you with what the bag looks like. It's just Town of Plimpton. It's got the seal on it, and it's, I think it's orange. I could be wrong.
All right.
But I'll send you the link, not the link, but I'll send you over the email from Way Zero.
Okay.
Any other questions? Anything you'd like me to discuss?
Well, I've got one other thing. I brought up before. I'd like to see the sign, like a sandwich sign, the size of a door, that says trash per ton equals X.
Yep. No, no, no. We had sent off a print to Signorama. I don't have that either.
Okay, could you send me a copy?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'll see what happened with that, and I'll send that over to you tomorrow, along with the other one.
Might as well send it to all of us.
Yes, yes, absolutely, absolutely.
So John, what is that? You wanted a larger sign for...
I want a large sign that says cardboard, cost per ton, $95. I'm making up a few numbers. Plastic and bottles, $95. Metal, $95. Trash, $190. Just so that when people come to the transfer station, it registers that if you throw it in the trash, it's costing us a lot more than, you know, if it goes in the recycle.
Yeah, no, and unfortunately, well, I don't know if it's unfortunately, however you want to phrase it, the resident's going to figure that out with the amount of bags they buy too. The more they can recycle, the better off they are.
Yeah, I just want to, I see this as a positive reinforcement.
Oh, I do too. I agree with you. I do agree with you, John. It was something that we have worked on, have been working towards. We don't have the sign yet, but we had to get all the stickers and other stuff ready too before.
That's all right, yeah. As long as we get a little time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And Rob, in February, we should probably get together and start planning our training for March, when we're reaching out to residents to train them on the program. So we'll do like a virtual training and some in-person trainings, and it would be nice to have some samples of what can and cannot be recycled for some of these training sessions. So, you know, maybe we could even just start gathering things up ourselves, and so it'll be hands-on training for residents on how to, yeah, be successful with the program.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, Mark, anything more? Or Rob?
I noticed Michelle Yams is on here. I didn't know if she was just listening or had any issues, questions?
I do have a question.
Go ahead, Michelle.
Well, in the pamphlet, it said yuck. No yuck. Well, when I peel onions, I throw the peelings in my trash. I don't throw carrots and stuff like that that I can give to the animals. But I mean, what is yuck?
Yuck, it's like organic waste, food waste, anything like that, anything that can be composted. You can compost it. You can put it in there, but technically, it's not part of the mainstream trash. Pretty much everyone puts that in there. I hate to sound like that.
I mean, it's garbage.
Yeah, yep. Yep. Some people have chickens. If you know any chickens or animals like that, a lot of them will eat it, pigs.
It's funny, it was mentioned.
Will they eat onion skins?
I know I used to feed my chicken onion skins.
Really? Ugh.
Yeah, they were, they were, they were my trash compacters. I guess you could say they ate all my leftover food.
Wow, I never thought of an animal wanting onion skins.
It's a chicken, they're omnivore. They'll pretty much eat whatever you give them.
Really?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
What is another example of yuck? Like, when people make coffee, what do they do with their grains?
Coffee grinds, I believe, is good for your garden. You can actually mix them with the soil. I think it actually keeps certain pests away and puts nutrients back.
But in the winter, are we going to want to run outside and put our grains outside? You know what I'm saying? It just doesn't seem practical to me as a person. I'm not talking practical as a transfer station, but most people put their coffee... I don't drink coffee, so it's just a question that I had in my mind, all these different things that people throw in the trash, and I don't know what yuck means.
Well, it's basically like food waste, anything that's, I guess you could, lack of better terms, yucky.
It's all yucky to me.
Yeah.
Trash, you know, like when I get chicken, I get Purdue chicken, and I take the package and I throw it in the trash. Is that yuck?
I think the plastic might be recyclable. You'd have to look. There's usually numbers on the back of the plastic, any plastic cartons, recyclables.
What about bones?
Well, but bones is once again organic waste. Technically, we're not supposed to take it, but...
I wouldn't want some poor animal choking to death on chicken bones.
No, I can't blame you on that one.
I mean, I'm crazy, but I feed the birds and stuff. It's just how I am. But I don't want to put bones outside.
Michelle, we may have more information for you as we get closer to implementing the program, where we actually have some official training. And I know they do sell countertop little composters where you could put organic waste in there, and then when you have the opportunity, you could, you know, put it out in the woods, or if you had a composter, you could compost it. And I know with the coffee grinds, I believe they're really good for hydrangeas. They help the hydrangeas to stay blue. But, you know, we'll certainly be in a position, a better position to answer some of your specific questions as we get closer to the date and really take a deeper dive into this as to, you know, specifics like this. And those are all really good questions, so...
And what about the cost? I added up all the bags that I would need according to what I was able to kind of decipher from my info, and it's not cheap.
How many trash bags do you use generally a week? Kitchen-sized, yeah, normal-sized kitchen trash bags?
13-gallon trash bags, I would say FOA.
Four? Is it just you at home?
No, my son and I.
Oh, okay.
And I am very good at recycling. I'm very fussy. I wash out the plastic cups, the cat food comes in, in the tin cans, and I put them in the recycle.
Yeah. Okay, well, four bags isn't too, too bad. Believe it or not, you'd be less than what the current sticker was going to be. The projected price for the sticker was going to be $360, I think it was $360 for the year for the sticker.
I'm 68.
Yeah, she's a senior.
So it would have been half that. Yeah, it might be a touch more. If you figured it out at the, sorry, at the full price rate, it works out to be like 4.1 bags a week you'd get to throw out. That would be equivalent to what the sticker price was going to be. Yes, you're going to be a senior, but senior rates, you'd be a little bit less. You might be able to get a bag or two a week out of your trash, just in recyclables alone, if you're not currently recycling.
It doesn't count my recycling.
Your recycling's free. It will always be free. You don't have to bag.
It does. It comes out to more than a sticker.
Well, it might at four bags a week.
Yeah.
At a senior rate, but I'm sure you could get your trash down to two or three bags a week by pulling out recyclables, and then you would be back down to a normal senior rate.
You'd be surprised. I'm very careful.
Well, Michelle, look for training in March. We're going to be having a hands-on training session scheduled, as well as a virtual training session, because there may be items that you're actually putting in the trash that you could recycle that may help you reduce the number of bags that you're accumulating. I know my husband and I, we do typically two bags a week with the two of us, and I'm not a fantastic recycler. I certainly have got room for improvement, but I am recycling. So I'm looking forward to learning more about the problem, the program too, and finding out other things that I'm typically throwing in the trash that I have the ability to recycle. So what we can do is, I'll get, we can get your email from Bree, or Bree can get your email, and then as these training sessions are scheduled, she can shoot you an email and let you know, so that you can participate.
Maybe give it to Colleen and it could be in her newsletter, you know, Council on Aging.
Yeah, we will definitely work with her.
I really appreciate your time. It's been really bugging me.
Michelle, glad you got on the call.
Michelle, any questions you have, you're more than welcome to call the Highway Department. I can try my best to answer you or find out the answer for you. Don't hesitate.
I really do. I don't want to be a pest, but it does make me a little nervous. That yuck thing's got to...
Change always makes everyone nervous, but I'm sure we can work through it.
You know, the only person that likes change is a wet baby.
A wet baby?
Michelle, thank you for joining us.
Thank you, darling.
Thank you, Michelle. All right, Rob, I think you pretty much covered it. I don't have any more questions. John, or Mark, or Liz?
I'm afraid to ask one.
You can ask.
No, I'm fine. I'm fine.
Well, thank you, Rob, so much for joining us. It's great to hear about everything that's going on in the department, and we'll be, I'm sure, very active early spring as we roll out the Pay as You Throw program and working closely with residents to make sure everybody understands the program.
Absolutely.
Beautiful. Well, thanks, Rob. Thanks for joining us. Have a great evening. All right, bye.
Have a good, bye.
All right, so next item on our agenda is Turkey Swamp Purchase and Sales Agreement. Mark, did you or Liz want to take the lead on this one?
This item, see it again for our next meeting. The attorney's supposed there, but it's not quite ready just yet. We hope to have it in plenty of time for our meeting on the 23rd.
Great. Thank you, Liz. Okay, next item on the agenda is an appointment. This is a recommendation to appoint Robert Orr as a full-time police officer until dissolved. Liz, did you want to speak to this one?
Sure. This is at the suggestion of Police Chief Matt Hall, and Robert Orr will be an excellent addition to the team. He's already cleared all of his examination protocols. He was formerly employed by the Town of Rochester, so he'll be joining us from there. And he came with excellent reviews, and he'll be a great addition to the Plimpton Police Department. He's already a full-time police officer, full-time trained, and ready to get out there and start working.
John or Mark, any questions for Liz on this?
It's great.
No, very pleased to have a new full-time guy.
Yeah, me too. This is wonderful news. All right, so I'll make a motion that we appoint Robert Orr as a full-time police officer in the Plimpton Police Department until dissolved. And this would be effective immediately, Liz?
Correct, yes.
Okay, effective immediately. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, second, Mark? Roll call vote. Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay. All right, Bree, how about a report on warrants paid?
Hi, and just if you can come in tomorrow and sign the appointments, so Officer Warke can go get sworn in in the clerk's office, that would be great.
Sure thing.
And warrants paid, $12,070 and 91 cents. Yes, $12,070 and 91 cents.
Great. Thank you, Bree, very much. All right, Liz, do you have a town administrator's update?
I do have updates, and before we get into that, I just have a couple correspondence items that I want to make sure that we don't pass by. The first one, we have the contract for design services for the Old Town House roof project, and that is for Habib and Associates, and it is in the amount of $45,000. And this is part of the project to replace the roof at the Old Town House. Funding was already approved for this project at our special town meeting back in November. So I'm planning to sign the contract for the design services. I just wanted to run it by the board and put it on an agenda in case you had any questions about it.
John or Mark, any questions for Liz on the contract for design services?
No, we've discussed this at Town Properties Committee, and it's a very good thing to do.
Mark, anything?
All good.
Yeah, I thought it looked good too, Liz. Do you need us to take a vote to authorize you to do this, or do you just want to go ahead?
I don't think we need it, but you know what? While we're talking about it, you might as well. It might just be cleaner that way, so that we have a record of it.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we authorize the town administrator to sign a contract for design services with Habib and Associates regarding the Old Town House roof.
Second.
All right, roll call vote. Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes.
And then also in correspondence, we have a request. It's an event on town roadways, and this is for the Best Buddies Bike Ride scheduled for June 3rd. And Bree has already forwarded this along to Police Chief, Fire Chief, and so on. But I think if you want to take a vote to allow or to acknowledge that they're going to be using town roadways on that date for the bike race.
This is the one that we do every year. We've done for several years?
All right, any questions on this one? All right, I'll make a motion that we authorize Best Buddies to use the town roads for their annual bike ride on June 3rd, 2023, pending approval by police, fire, and highway or any other town department that needs to sign off on this as well.
Second.
All right, roll call vote. Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Russo? Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay.
And then for town administrator's updates, completed the application for district local technical assistance through Old Colony Planning Council. They actually had us resubmit the same application, similar to last year's application, so that they can assist us with updating our housing production plan. There is an update due for our current plan. I believe it's due in April of this year. So they're planning on helping us with that, so I've completed that application. I have also applied with the Commonwealth for Technical Assistance in terms of implementing the MBTA communities, the new guidelines for that with the zoning and the housing protocols and everything. So we're going to hear back more on that as far as who we're paired up with for technical assistance. So more to come on that. There was an ARPA funds update today from the county, and it sounds like we may have the opportunity to not be quite so limited in what we can apply for as far as projects go for the county ARPA funds. It sounds like they are going to be moving towards a revenue replacement program, which is what's being allowed for the local level money. So that just opens up the possibilities a bit more. I received word from the Town Properties Committee that they would like us to move forward with scheduling the piping system cleanout, and that's to improve some of the functioning of our plumbing at the fire station and at the townhouse. So we'll be moving forward with that. And we're also in the process of closing out the current funding and projects under Green Communities, and this was for the heating pump... the heating pumps that we had installed at the fire station and the library. And then hopefully we can get that closed out quickly and then maybe get our vendor in to do a new audit of all the town buildings and then look, look ahead to new applications. Um, Mike Slosson reported to me that he's noticed of pretty significant savings thus far with heating costs, um, since the new pump has been installed. So he was happy with it. Um, so that's good news overall. It's always nice to see these projects be effective when you have them done. Um, so that concludes my update.
Thank you, Liz. All right. Any questions for Liz? All right. All right. Uh, next item on our agenda is the minutes from 1219. Bree sent those out a couple of weeks ago. Did everybody get a chance to read those?
Yeah.
All right. Um, any amendments?
I didn't have a problem.
Concerned? Everything look good? Okay. All right. I'll make a motion. We accept the minutes from 1219 as written.
Second.
A second?
Second.
Second, Mark. Uh, roll call vote. Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay. All right. So we're on to, actually, before we do the raves, I'll, um, I'll note that our next meeting is, uh, January 23rd, followed by February 13th. So, um, we're on to raves. Who'd like to go first?
Um, so my rave is for the two swans and the great blue heron, um, who seem to be overwintering at Two Brooks. It is so beautiful there and it's wonderful to share that space, uh, with these handsome animals.
All right, I'll go next. My rave is for our, um, for Liz and, uh, our financial team who are, um, you know, working to put budgets together and, um, just, uh, keep track of things for us, give us these great spreadsheets so we know where people stand with their budget expenditure. So it's, um, it's, I really appreciate all the hard work to, uh, to try to keep, um, us up to date as to where we stand and, um, and planning for next year's budget. So thank you very much.
I, um, I don't know if it's a rave. I'm, uh, happy after the holidays to be home and healthy with the family. Um, it's my time in life where we're losing friends, so. It's kind of hard at times and, uh, I guess you heard Christine that Alan Ferguson passed away.
No, I, I had heard that he, um, was sick, but I did not know he passed.
Yeah. And Dave Billings' wife, Muffy, passed away too.
Oh, I'm so sorry to hear that.
So, especially when they're younger than you. It's sort of like, I don't know, somebody looking over my shoulder. But, um, we are home and healthy. Uh, I think most people are probably looking back and saying, it was a good holiday and thank God we're able to go on.
Indeed. With our loved ones and, uh, friends who lost family members. It's always, um, hard and I think it can be even harder over the holidays.
It does seem so, especially at this time of year.
Right. Especially this time of year and going into a time of year where, um, we tend to be isolated as well with, um, the weather, which can make things more challenging. All right. So anything else for tonight? All right. I'll make a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote. Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. All right. Good night, everyone. We'll see you in a couple of weeks.